All right. Now being six, shortly after six o'clock, we'll call the, I'm sorry, October 2nd meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. This meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Committee Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. First item on the agenda, we have Amy Quessell from KP Law to come and talk to us about recreational marijuana and any advice she may have on how the town should kind of get prepared for this issue.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a petition I'll pass out very quickly and we can go over it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Perfect.
So unfortunately, when I do these presentations to towns, I hate it because a lot of my answers are "we don't know yet" because regulations have not come out yet. And so, when it gets down into the nitty-gritty, a lot of the answers are "we don't know yet" because the regulations are not out. However, things are, I will say that, you know, things are progressing. So, as you all know, in November of 2016, the voters approved question four, which allowed the recreational use of marijuana. Back in 2012 is when the voters approved the medical use of marijuana. The act in 2016, the recreational use, it contained a lot of inconsistencies, it raised a lot of questions. It was a petition article on the state ballot and it was eventually signed in December of 2016. And then there were numerous, numerous amendments to that act. And those all came into one. And on July 28th, the governor signed one revised law, which was an act to ensure safe access to marijuana. And that was adopted of Chapter 55 of the Acts of 2017. And what they tried to do with that is they tried to combine medical and recreational and tried to fix some of the inconsistencies and tried to streamline the process. And we'll go through all that. But the most significant changes from the municipal perspective is the licensing, the optional tax surcharges, and amendment to local restrictions or prohibitions that can be considered by each municipality. The act actually repealed the 2012 medical marijuana and everything has been moved under General Law's Chapter 94I. It also has created a comprehensive oversight commission called the Cannabis Control Commission, which is quite similar to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. The Cannabis Control Commission is, it's going to enforce regulations governing the cultivation, sale, and testing of marijuana. These are the regulations that have not yet been created or implemented or anything. The statute requires that these regulations will adopt procedures for the issuance, the transfer, renewal of licenses. They will address security of establishments. They will address security of transportation, security of storage, the requirement of packaging. They will require special packaging to protect children. They will have restrictions on signs, marketing, and they will also have requirements for safe disposal. Just recently, within the past month, the Cannabis Control Commission has been named. It's Steve Hoffman, Jennifer Flanagan, she's a former state senator, Britt McBride, and Kay Doyle are former counsel for DPH, who currently have regulations that regulate medical marijuana. And they both worked in the medical marijuana section of DPH. And Shailene Title, who was a attorney at Department of Public Safety. Steve Hoffman, the chair, was a former executive at Bain &amp; Company. So, the act sets out a timeline and the timeline, a lot of the milestones have already been met. The first was the appointment of a 25-member cannabis advisory board. They are making recommendations on guidelines, rules, and regulations. And then, one of the 25 members is the president or is designee of the Massachusetts Municipal Association. So towns do have a say. I do have a list of the members of the Cannabis Advisory Board. One of them is the Walpole Chief of Police. There are some municipal presence in this advisory board. By September 1st, the Cannabis Control Commission was to be named. They will have the authority to adopt regulations. And then they will also take over the licensing of medical marijuana. They will take that over from the Department of Public Health before December 31st of 2018. So that's going to be very interesting because not only are they going to have to implement regulations for recreational marijuana, they are going to have to, and then start licensing recreational marijuana, they're going to have to start taking over implementing the regulations that already exist for medical marijuana, but they're also going to have to start licensing medical marijuana. So, it's quite a bit on their plate, in my opinion. As of March 15th, 2018, this is when they are going to have to have the adoption of regulations, guidelines, and protocol. And this is when they will, the issuance of licenses will start for recreational marijuana. So that's kind of a key date. April 1st is when the licensing begins. So that's when they will actually accept licenses. And the important date, the important fact about April 1st, 2018, is that the Cannabis Control Commission is governed by the zoning bylaws that are in effect at the time of the application. So, when an application is filed with the Cannabis Control Commission, whatever the zoning, whatever zoning bylaw is in effect at that time is what's going to be in effect for that municipality. So, as we get into this further, that's why if there's a moratorium, that's when you take the time to get your zoning bylaw and your general bylaws in order. So you can make sure that you, if you want to regulate where these facilities go, that's the time to do it, before April 1st. Or you're in the moratorium, either one. And then June 1st is when they start issuing licenses. They must approve or deny applications within 90 days. One of the things that the statute does allow is a zoning moratoria. There's a lot of policy and planning issues for municipalities and a moratorium allows a temporary limit on the ability of applicants to locate marijuana establishments. And what it is, it's basically a tool that just, that gives the municipality additional time. Many of our municipalities have already adopted moratoriums. And the Attorney General has allowed moratoriums to December 31st, 2018. We have seen that the Attorney General is not allowing moratoriums past December of 2018. So, our recommendation is not to go past December 31st, 2018. And it's important to, if a municipality is thinking about banning recreational marijuana facilities or limiting where they go, the number of them, anything like that, and if there's any chance that you're not going to have a bylaw in place by April 1st of 2018, then we would recommend a moratorium. And the thing that's always hard for municipalities is that you have town meetings. So you can't just, you can't just do this. So you have to, not only do you have town meeting, you have to count backwards, you have to make sure, if it's a zoning bylaw, you have to make sure that the planning board has had their public hearing and you have to count backwards and make sure that it was properly advertised. I mean, it's not easy. I think that everybody can agree on that. So, if it can't happen before April 1st of 2018, then we do recommend.
We did vote a moratorium at our last town meeting that shall be in effect through June 30th, 2018.
And we can extend that, too.
Okay. Till December?
Yes.
Okay.
And the last one, so, and the last one was prior to this act. So that's why we would have to, we would do it again anyway.
Okay.
So, and then, Plimpton also has a zoning bylaw with medical marijuana. So we'll get into that, too, in this. But, so, if, so, under the new statute, under the new act, municipalities can, they can regulate the time, the place, the manner of the operation, and they can impose ordinances and bylaws that are not unreasonably impractical. And that's exactly what Plimpton has done in their medical marijuana zoning bylaw. And they can restrict licensed cultivation, processing, and manufacturing of marijuana if it's a public nuisance, and establish restrictions on signs related to establishments. And you can also, you can also seek to limit the number of facilities. And so, you can prohibit the number of facilities in the following ways. You can limit them to fewer than 20% of the number of retail off-premises alcohol beverage licenses issued by the municipality. Or you can limit them to fewer than the number of medical marijuana treatment facilities in the municipality. So if you wanted to do either one of those, you would have to do those by, you know, by the bylaw. It would have to be in a bylaw. So, and then, to, when you have, when you're prohibiting or limiting these recreational marijuana facilities, the procedure to do these has significantly changed from the November, from the November legislation to the current legislation. If a municipality voted in favor of question four, which is the majority of voters, you know, they voted yes, and that was Plimpton. Plimpton voted yes on question four, then two votes have to be taken before an ordinance or bylaw can be enacted. It must be approved by the voters by ballot at an annual or special election, and an ordinance or bylaw must be approved by the local legislative body. Now, we have, we are, we recommend that, there has to be a ballot question, but we recommend a zoning bylaw and a general bylaw. And I will get into that further, but basically that's because the language of the statute is vague and, but I can get into that further. But if there is a municipality that, if this municipality, if Plimpton had voted no, then it's only a one-step process. Then all you need is the bylaw. You do not need the ballot. And then, also, with the ballot, you have to have, Town Council has to prepare a brief summary that makes it clear either how you're limiting them to the number that can be allowed or the ban. And also, the ballot has to, the ballot has to mimic the bylaw or, you know, the bylaw. They have to mimic each other. They have to be the same. And, so, the reason why we recommend doing both a general and a zoning bylaw is because the act is silent on it. And a general bylaw, if you are limiting where, if you are limiting the number of facilities, then it can be taken that you are limiting a use of property, a use of someone's property, and therefore it could be considered a zoning issue. And that's why it could, it should be in a zoning bylaw. However, as a general bylaw, the benefit of having a general bylaw is that it protects the town from zoning issues such as grandfathering, zoning freezes, things like that. And also, a lower quantum of vote is required for a general bylaw. You only need a majority, whereas with a zoning bylaw, you need two-thirds. And the Attorney General has approved, just recently, the Attorney General did approve a town that did a ballot with a zoning bylaw. And in their approval, they approved it but did state that they recommend a general bylaw. So, and again, this is an area that is, this is another, this is an area that's evolving. And I could be back here again in four months saying you don't have to do one or the other because the Attorney General could come out with a different opinion saying you only need one or the other. So, this is, you know, again, because it's silent, we are taking a belts and suspenders approach. And then again, the bylaw language has to be the same as the ballot question. The prior law required that a city or town allow a recreational marijuana establishment to be located in any area in which a medical marijuana treatment center is registered to engage in the same type of activity. The new law has rescinded that requirement but added a, added a provision that no zoning ordinance or bylaw can prevent a medical marijuana facility from converting to a recreation, to a recreational marijuana facility. And, but it is important to note that the conversion can be prohibited if a municipality has adopted a total ban on all recreational marijuana establishments. And then, I just noted that Plimpton, the zoning bylaw, Section 9, does allow medical marijuana facilities in the business zone. And that's by special permit by the planning board. The petition for ballot, you have to, for marijuana cafes, which is basically the, where you consume on-site, that has not changed. That is, you still have to have 10% of registered voters on a state, on a biennial state election, which is going to be in November of 2018. There's no timeline provided in the law for this. However, it's our understanding that a petition would have to be filed with the Secretary of the Commonwealth no later than the first Wednesday in August of 2018. And then the other thing that significantly changed, or, I guess, not significantly, but changed, is the host community agreements. And these are something that we deal with all the time. The host community agreement was revised. It now covers both recreational and medical marijuana establishment. And it now requires that recreational marijuana establishment and medical marijuana treatment centers enter into agreements, enter into these host community agreements. The last, the 2012 legislation did not require it. There's a reasonable community impact fee, but it caps it at 3%. And it, and that's of the establishment's gross sales. It limits it to, and it also limits the term of the agreement to no more than five years. That's a significant change. However, it does not preclude the renegotiation at the end of the initial five-year term. And the host community agreement, any impact fees have to be reasonably related to the costs from the facility. For example, they have to be, you know, for increased police patrolling, for increased drug awareness programs at the schools, things like that. They have to be, they have to be directly related. And the municipality is required to document its costs.
So, does, how does that play? I'm a little confused with the 3% of gross sales versus you have to justify the cost.
Well, a lot of times, the, a lot of times, part of the 3% is a donation from the facility to the town. And some of the, and the impact fee, the donation is because of, because of what they do is they donate to the DARE program, for example, at the schools. So, they would donate, and that would, that would fund a DARE officer. And so, that is a direct impact because it's not only helping the drug program but also the police.
So, if we wanted to have 3%, do we have to justify that 3% by item, by cost?
Yes. And the cost would be that you are funding a DARE officer.
Couldn't just fund the general fund?
No, you could not.
Okay.
No, you could not. And the host community agreements that I've done have laid out, a lot of it is, and a lot of it is with the input from the schools, from the police department, even from the fire department. A lot of it is, you know, a lot, some of it's for a foam, for a foam truck, some of it's for, and that's, that was in a municipality that was dealing with a cultivation facility. In other ones, it was $25,000 towards a program that had to do with rehabilitating, you know, teenagers. And so, you can have numerous items, and then the remainder can go to something else. But you can, you can find out throughout the community what you need. And it can go to numerous things, but it can't just go into the general fund, unfortunately. And, so, one of the things is that, under 40A, under Chapter 40A, Section 3, is the agricultural exemption and, under zoning, which exempts, it exempts agricultural activities. So there was always a big question whether was growing marijuana an agricultural activity. And this, Chapter 351 of the Acts of 2016 amended the zoning act to provide that the growing, cultivation, distribution, or dispensation of marijuana does not qualify for the agricultural exemption. And the new act expressly adds that municipalities are not precluded from establishing zoning bylaws or ordinances which allow commercial marijuana growing and cultivation on land used for commercial agricultural, aquacultural, floricultural, and horticultural. So, you can allow it, but it's not, it's not automatically exempt from all zoning. And the tax for, on the sale of recreational marijuana with the new act did go up. It went up from, an increase from 2% to 3% for local, the local tax that municipalities may impose on the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the city or town. And if the municipality wishes to adopt the local sales tax, it must accept General Law's Chapter 64N, Section 3. And if you've already, if the municipality has already accepted it, it has to re-accept it because of the rate has gone up from 2% to 3%. And the local sales tax does not apply to sales from marijuana growers to marijuana retailers. It only, it doesn't, it doesn't apply from marijuana to marijuana, so. And the Act 64N, Section 2, increased the amount of state tax on the sales of recreation marijuana from 3.75 to 10.75. And then, the changes to the medical marijuana laws, there was the repeal of the 2012 Medical Marijuana Act, and then the new Chapter 94I. And then the transfer of the oversight and regulation of medical marijuana will be transferred from the Department of Public Health to the Cannabis Control Commission. And it will, the Department of Public Health will continue to regulate medical marijuana under 1005 CM, or, yeah, 10105 CMR 725 until the transfer and regulation is complete. Again, we don't know if the Cannabis Control Commission will simply just adopt 105 725 or if they will change those regulations, the current medical marijuana regulations, and create new ones. It's another issue that we don't know yet, because it hasn't happened yet. For personal use of recreation, recreational marijuana, not much changed from November to now. Persons 21 years of age or older may possess, use, purchase, process, or manufacture two ounces or less. Within a person's primary residence, a person may possess up to 10 ounces of marijuana and any marijuana produced on the premises for personal use by not more than six marijuana plants. If there is more than one grower at the residence, there may be up to 12 plants. A person may give away or transfer without remuneration, meaning no payment, to a person of age 21 years or older up to one ounce, of which no more than five grams may be in the form of marijuana concentrate, provided that such transfer is not advertised or promoted to the public. And a person of 21 years of age or older may also possess or manufacture marijuana accessories or sell such accessories to a person 21 years of age or older. And then, the cultivation and processing of marijuana plants, these are the plants that you're growing at your house, may not be visible from a public place. And any marijuana exceeding one ounce within a person's place of residence must be secured by a lock. No person shall consume marijuana in a public place or smoke marijuana or smoking tobacco is prohibited. The term "public place" is not defined in the act. It's generally understood to include areas both privately and publicly owned to which the public has a right of access by invitation, either expressly or implied. And again, this is another area where we think it's going to evolve, the law is going to evolve eventually. Open containers of marijuana or marijuana products are prohibited in the passenger area of any motor vehicle. And then with employment issues, the relevant portion of the law provides that this chapter shall not require any employer to permit or accommodate conduct otherwise allowed by this chapter in the workplace, and shall not affect the authority of employers to enact and enforce workplace policies restricting the consumption of marijuana by employees. So even though there's the legalization of, in Massachusetts, of the personal use of marijuana, public employers may continue to prohibit their employees from using or possessing marijuana in the workplace or in public buildings, and from working while impaired by marijuana. We recommend that drug and alcohol testing and related policies should be reviewed and updated to clarify this. And then, marijuana is still prohibited under federal law. So, federal law prohibiting the use of marijuana by employees who possess firearms, such as police officers, and those required to hold CDL licenses will continue to be in full force, notwithstanding the change in Massachusetts. And that is it. Any questions? Thank you.
Do you think the federal government will look at changing that law?
Not for a while.
Okay. Would it depend on the number of states that actually approve it?
Yes.
How many have approved it now?
Three, four, four.
Only four states?
There's Washington, Colorado, Delaware, and Massachusetts. I think that's it.
But it's on a lot of ballots, upcoming ballots, isn't it?
So, that's recreational. Medical has a lot more.
Okay.
Okay.
So there is a significant difference between medical and recreational. And it is on a lot of ballots, you're correct.
But it may not pass. Who knows at this point?
And I do think-
As long as we have the Attorney, the Attorney General, we have.
I do think that Massachusetts is, has been a guinea pig for other states with regard to the petition, the petition ballot question, and how, how much, how much it needed to be fixed, and how much scrambling went on. And I think that other states are maybe trying to avoid that because there was quite a bit of scrambling that had to go on. There was, the November, the act that came out of November was really lacking in a lot of areas, particularly with municipal- a lot of areas, particularly with municipalities and what, what the municipalities were supposed to do. So, a lot had to be fixed.
Being that we've already established the moratorium, would you advise at this next town meeting that we look to change the zoning and get it done in May so that we're within this? Or would you say we do both? Go for the bylaws and try to extend our, our moratorium in case there's an issue with the bylaws?
I would.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And that way, if for some reason the bylaw doesn't go or at last minute you feel you're not ready for the bylaw, at least you have the moratorium on there.
Okay. Do you know, will the state tax that they're getting, the 10.75, will any of that be used for drug treatment or opioids?
As far as I know, some of it will be and that, that was the reasoning for the increase up to the high, the higher amount was, was because of that. I don't know how much.
Okay.
Is any of that going to be funneled back to the towns?
No.
No.
Because of the towns have the local option. At this point, I don't think so, but I don't, I don't know for sure.
So, you would advise we adopt the local tax as well?
Probably, yes.
Okay. All right.
Yes, if, if the, if the town plans on allowing establishments, you know, by, for example, as they have with medical marijuana by special permit, then, then I don't see any reason why you wouldn't impose the tax.
Well, were it passed, the, to vote, it would probably be foolish for us to try to ban it where we need to try to make a way for it to work within the town's zoning.
Yeah, I, I don't see banning it, given the vote, but I do think we want strict laws around it.
Mm-hmm.
And we want some money coming in so that we can put in place the programs.
Yeah.
We're not going to have a lot of establishments, though.
Well, we'll just have to determine if we want it to be tied to the liquor licenses or tied to the medical marijuana, because we have.
We have two liquor licenses, right?
I think we have three liquor licenses, but we have zero medical marijuana facilities.
Plimpton Gas and Convenience.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I forgot that.
I don't know if the club license would count or not.
One.
It's one.
It's a license.
It's a license.
Yeah, the club license would probably count too.
They come on the three, it's three licenses.
Okay.
Who, who? Go ahead, Bree.
How do they, it says for the recreational marijuana that you can only have so much, how do they regulate that? Who's regulating that? Just me as a homeowner that?
The police. So, it would be, it would be if, if the police, you know, came across it, that, you know, if there were more than 12 plants, then you are in violation of the statute, so.
I'm not growing anything.
And also, and also, it can't be, it can't be seen from a public area, so it, it would be very hard to.
Yeah, Jen said they'd be there for something else and then just stumble upon the marijuana.
Right now, any place that's business zoned in Plimpton could be a potential place for marijuana.
Medical, for medical marijuana, yes, in the business zone only, by special permit of the, it's by, by special permit from the planning board and it's a very, it's a very comprehensive bylaw. It's section nine of the zoning bylaw and it has, it has quite a few requirements that are, that a facility is required to meet before they, before the planning board can give them a special permit. So, I would recommend the same type of zoning bylaw for a recreational facility. I mean, you.
But you wouldn't mimic them, would you? I mean, you wouldn't.
I mean, I mean, you could, you could, not exactly the same thing, but here you have, you know, you have the fact, you know, medical marijuana facilities shall be contained within a building or structure, you know, that would be the same. You have gross floor area less than 2,500 or in excess of 20,000, you know, you can adjust those kind of things. Here you have, you actually have the time, the operating hours between, you know, it shall operate, but other, you know, these, the operating hours, those things can also be regulated by a host community agreement.
Okay.
You know, things like that, but, you know, you could have screening, you could have, you know, in these kind of, in the zoning bylaw, you could require that the facility be properly screened, you could require that the sign, you know, signs be not, you know, from a public area or something like that, you know. And then, a lot of, the security, security is going to be, the statute requires that security be addressed by the regulations that have not yet been created, but also, the host community agreements also, whenever we do a host community agreement, we have the chief of police weigh in and we usually, security, we usually, the security is usually addressed through host community agreements. It's usually enhanced as to what the, the regulations, because the, the current DPH medical regulations have security and almost all of our host community agreements, we, we beef it up.
Does it have, talk about how close it can be to a place that sells alcoholic beverages?
The regulations currently do not, but we, they, you could do that.
Okay.
Yep, you definitely could.
Or a school or.
Yeah, school, church, like it used to be.
So, we can have a host community agreement for up to 3%, but that fee has to be tied to DARE something, but we can also enact the tax?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And would you recommend that we do both?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to, you have to do a host community agreement. You don't have to impose the 3%.
Okay.
But, but you have to have a host community agreement and then if you enact the 3%, then that 3% is a tax.
Okay.
It just, it's done.
Do you have questions, Mark?
I don't.
Okay. All right.
We have one over here.
Well, can I ask one more question? What is the current tax on alcohol and tobacco relative to the marijuana? So, the marijuana is 10.75. Do you know what alcohol and tobacco are?
Isn't it 6.25?
I'm just curious.
I think it, oh, tobacco is more. I don't.
So, tobacco is more than marijuana, because I thought tobacco was almost, what, a third of the price?
I would think so, I mean.
I mean, it's ridiculous, the tax on tobacco.
I do recall that it's a lot, but I don't.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, no worries, I was just curious.
And I can't blame the regulations on that, on that, I don't know, I'm sorry.
All right, Ken, you had a question?
Yes, as chairman of the zoning board of appeals, I've heard the word zoning more than 100 times in the last hour and this is probably a great presentation and overview and I intend to share this with the rest of members in the community. I guess I have two questions. I hear a lot of things which are by law changes in the next number of months or less than a year, which is interesting. I'm also on the bylaw review and rewrite committee, so I guess there's a question about how do we get that done? And then, there's the process after that, which are appeals from, I don't know where. If there are zoning applications and denials and appeals, I just sit with this flood of activity, zoning that could result in anything and everything being appealed and the title they're coming down. Can you think of waves of activity that result from this activity that affects zoning appeals in the near future? From where and from, you know, by whom and how soon?
We have, we have seen with, with regard to, so far with regard to medical marijuana facilities, we have seen none, no appeals. The medical marijuana facilities are, again, they're, they are, most, most of them are cited in accordance with zoning bylaws similar to yours that are well thought out. And normally, you have a facility that comes in and that works with the town and that, you know, because they have to enter into a host community agreement with the town, they're mostly willing to do whatever the town says and they, they normally follow all of these, you know, they, they don't, they don't, it's, it appears to me that these facilities don't come in and try and shoehorn themselves into a site. They, they go out and they find a site that will work for them.
On the medical?
On the medical side, yes. On the, on the recreational side, we don't have any yet because the license, there's no licenses until April of 2018. So, I, I couldn't tell you yet.
Oh, right, I know, I know.
Yeah, so, but on the medical, there have been none. There was a, there, there has been a lawsuit filed in federal court over a cultivation center and it was, the, the lawsuit was filed against probably 15 defendants and they're essentially attacking, it is, it appears they're attacking the statute and it was quite, it was a very convoluted, it was in the, it was in the paper and it was a very convoluted attempt, I think, to attack the statute. But that's the only, that's the only lawsuits that I've seen come out of this so far. So, with regard to a zoning bylaw, we will, we, we have sample zoning bylaws that we will provide the town with. We have a zoning bylaw, we have a general bylaw that we will provide the town with. So, there's, there's not much that you'll have to do on that side. We also have, for the moratorium, we have, we have the warrant articles for that, for you guys. So, whatever you need for this, we already have, we actually, you might already, you might actually already have it. We sent out, we sent out an e-blast in August that looked something like this.
Yeah, I think we did get that, yeah.
And attached to that was the moratorium, the model moratorium and, and I think the model bylaw. But if not, I have the model bylaw that I could, I could get you, so.
Good.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, looks like that's it. Well, thank you so much, Amy, for coming. I appreciate your time and the very concise.
That was important.
Yeah, presentation, we've got a lot of good information on how to prepare.
I can email this to you, yes, if you'd like.
In a PDF?
Sure, I'm sure, I, I'm sure somebody could, I'm, but we have this wonderful woman at our firm that could do that, I'm sure.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Select my daughter assistant.
Okay, I could get it. Is it on the website?
It should be, yes.
Okay, so I'll find it. Or Greg has it, somebody has it, yeah.
Yeah, Greg's got it.
Okay, excellent, I will get that.
Perfect. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you for having me, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so our next appointment is Tara at 7:00. So, why don't we get?
We have.
I just have a small presentation.
Okay, all right.
It's not on the agenda, but it's very welcome.
Well, then, we're going to have to hold it till next week.
I don't think Mike would like.
He's waited a long time for this. So, that's for you.
You came down to this?
I did, I came.
I know what it is, oh my goodness.
We decided you're now officially here.
You're official.
Wow.
Oh, okay, I know what this is.
Ta-da.
Yay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bree.
You passed the test.
You're off your probationary period.
Now, you can sign the warrant, only it goes back in the way.
Oh, my gosh, that's funny, I'm glad that it came in.
Nice work, Mark.
All right, so, community paradigm executive, town administrator search follow-up. Do we have any, they met last Wednesday, they're doing interviews Wednesday and Thursday and hopefully come out with a list of people that they're going to recommend to be interviewed by this board.
Right.
Okay.
I understand they had 35 people that they.
Really?
They whittled down to, I think, something like seven.
Okay.
That they're going to interview, so.
Very exciting.
Yeah, it is.
Very exciting.
Terrific.
Wow.
Okay, FIRE and EMS MRI follow-up. Do you want to use this as a segue to the contract?
The contract, yeah. So, based on the discussion we had last week, there were a few things that had to be changed. Those have been changed. I think it's fine, I've reviewed it and these were minor tweaks anyways. So, I think we should have a vote to sign this contract for professional services with municipal resources for the comprehensive FIRE EMS study.
So, move.
All right, so, all second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, let's sign it.
Done.
So, when are they going to start?
So, the process is now, we'll, we'll, we'll scan that and send it over to them, Bree?
Yes.
The contract. We have about two weeks of work that we have to provide them with all the data in the contract. They'll take that and there's actually two places to sign.
But I'll do it after you do.
After they get the data, they'll review it and then they'll start setting up interviews. And one of the things they have asked for is we will have to make a list of the people we want interviewed beyond the FIRE department staff.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay.
So, we don't need to do that right this minute, but.
Well, you think we'll need that, like, within a couple of weeks?
Oh, yes, yeah, we should do that within a week.
Does beyond the FIRE staff include the people that have left? Or are they included in that?
No, I believe.
We'll have to ask for that.
We'll have to ask for that.
Okay.
Because they're presently not part of the department.
Okay.
And then, there's other people that we will want.
Because we're, at least presently, we're not scheduled to meet next week, I don't think.
No, we're not. It's a holiday.
Okay, yeah, you're right.
I, I have no problem doing a meeting, if we want to do a brief meeting.
On Tuesday or at some point that week?
Yeah, Tuesday at work.
Okay.
I can, I can make up a list of what I think and circulate it and then you can add or delete.
Perfect.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right. So, you should be able to get the names from Barbara, right? She would have the names of who left or the chief?
I've got all the names.
You've got all the names?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think, are we meeting Bernie on October 11th, which is next Wednesday?
We are.
We could do this as part of before or after.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Because I think we've got Bernie at, is it 6:00 or 6:30?
I didn't get a time, but.
All right, I think I.
Didn't I post that meeting?
No, I don't think you have posted it yet.
And actually, that'll have to be posted Thursday because Monday's a holiday.
Well, we could post it right away. All right, so Bernie.
Thanks, Bree.
Bernie is at 5:30.
Oh, good.
So, I mean, I could try to get here at 5:15. How long do you think it's going to take?
Well, I'll circulate the list ahead of time, so.
Okay.
Shouldn't take.
I mean, we could do it right after, we could list it for 6:00 if it turned into a little bit later.
Sure.
It's not a problem.
Okay.
Probably easy if we do it after.
All right, perfect. All right, so we'll just post it for 6:00 then?
What is happening with Bernie Lynch?
We're meeting with Bernie at 5:30. And then, at 6 o'clock, we'll have a meeting to discuss prep work we need to do for the MRI, to work with a consultant.
In fact, we don't even need to put a time on it, it's just an agenda item.
Yeah, just put it on there, right as the agenda, perfect. So, we'll just start it as soon as we wrap it, Bernie.
Yeah, so the two agenda items will be Bernie and then this.
Yeah, MRI, perfect. Thank you, Bree, very much. Okay, so next item is.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I dropped. Want to meet here or do you want to meet there? This small room.
I don't know who else might be meeting.
You know what?
We're not going to have cable, so.
I could check.
It's not going to be recording.
Why don't you check to see if, I mean, public safety might be, I don't know when their next meeting is.
Is that the 11th? Yeah, they are meeting. They usually meet in this room.
Right, so why don't we go and meet in the small meeting room?
I just posted, I didn't post it, but I.
Yeah, I think, I saw the cable filming, little notice, okay. All right, so now we're on to liquor licenses. We've got a one-day request from Brook Retreat, a one-day request from Marbar, how do you say that, Miraboo?
Miraboo.
Miraboo, Miraboo Spa and then Plimpton Gas and Convenience is requesting a transfer of license due to change in ownership? Okay, all right, so, but the only one, so actually, we're going to be voting on all of these tonight, okay. All right, so you have requested proof of insurance, we've got the TIPS certifications on the people that are going to be pouring.
Yes.
And complete applications, the form that were, and the check for the fee.
Is that the Brook Retreat one?
This first one is Miraboo.
Okay, Miraboo, yes. They're fine with us and Kathy, she came with one check thinking the fees were $75 just for it all.
Okay.
So, I got an email. So I got an email, and she was confirming that she had mailed the check. And if it wasn't here by Wednesday, she was gonna come and hand deliver Kathy.
To what health?
Yep, so she was all set, she got all the things she needed.
Okay. All right.
And they only got to one of that now.
Perfect, okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that we authorize Miraboo to, for a one-day liquor license for, to be, to provide the alcohol for the Cranberry Bog Dinner excursion?
Yes.
Okay, and that is on October fourteenth, from four to eight p.m. And this is for beer and wine only.
And where is it?
It is located at seventy-two Brook Street.
Mayflower Cranberry.
Okay, Mayflower Cranberry?
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the second one we have is Brook Retreat. And once again, you wanna take a look at that one and sign it? You've got proof of insurance, we have a completed form. We've got copies of the TIP certifications for the bartenders. And.
All taxes paid.
All taxes are paid, fabulous.
But that's because, the reason that taxes came into play with this is because they're from Plimpton.
Okay, that's perfect. And that's, that's a good thing. All right, so this is, the applicant's name is South Shore Transformation, which is a Brook Retreat. So the alcohol is, who's actually got the pour for these guys? This is Pioppies. Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to authorize a liquor license for South Shore Transformations, the Brook Retreat. They're going to be hiring Pioppies for a event. The Mayflower Cranberries, what is this, Black Tie and Blue Jeans on the Bog? That sounds fun. On October twenty-first, from four to eight. And once again, this is just beer and wine.
Second.
Cisco was doing the food.
Oh, Cisco's doing the food.
Don't you have a chef that's coming in?
Fantastic.
A well-known chef that was on the, I think they had a. Who was the chef?
Terrific. All right, so we have a motion, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. So you wanna sign this one as well?
Yeah, there's two pages for you on this one.
Okay, all right, I'll give you this one. Thank you.
And there's actually probably, oh, this one?
Okay.
Yes, two pages for you on this one, too.
So you'll let everyone know that they're approved and ready to go for their festivities? Perfect. Right, so there's Miraboo.
You get here, and then a couple pages down.
Sound like nice events. Ten, two, seventeen.
They come through right?
What?
They go through, they canceled one of them the last minute, it's a little tough. We learned a lot.
Well, it's hard organizing.
Yeah, no, each one has one place.
No, you just have to sign it once, John, and then there's the Brook Retreat with Pioppies. Okay, last one is from Plimpton Gas and Convenience. And what we have to do is. Set a hearing, thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much. Yes.
So we received this, I believe, what, last week?
Received it last week, they closed on Thursday.
So there'll be no alcohol sales until this process is completed?
Correct, and that's, that's where I'm not sure what happens. Do they get, it's the same management that's over there? Are they allowed to run under Stephen? That's where, and they said that they would stop selling.
No. I would think they'd have to get it out of there. It's gonna be a long, it could be quite a long time before they're back in business.
They have, like I said, the same people.
Okay.
And that is in their.
The same people being the same staff, you mean?
Same staff, same everything.
Just new owner changes on Thursday, which from our perspective is the only. That's all that really matters.
The staff doesn't enter into it.
Well, they're all in it, when you look through the license, it asks you who is your manager.
The manager, right, and all that.
Who's selling, and who's, and everybody remains the same.
Okay, well, that will make things easier for them with background checks and all of that. But, yeah, it's, it still could take a little bit of time.
And then there is that other issue.
Okay, so.
I thought we were just voting for a hearing.
We are, that's all we're doing, is voting for a hearing. We have to set a hearing date within ten days of receipt of that complete application. The hearing doesn't have to be within ten days, but we have to set a hearing. So do you wanna do this on a Monday night?
I'm open to whatever you do feel.
I think we should do it on Monday night.
I was trying to do Monday, the sixteenth.
Monday, the sixteenth of October, do we have anybody on the agenda yet?
Okay. No, the chief wants to be on the twenty-third. So he's not.
All right, so this is the second, that would be two weeks. Does that give you enough time to get this advertised?
Yes, because if I notified Deb tomorrow, it would run this Friday.
Okay.
The following Friday, and then that would be the ten days, that's the fifteenth, so it could be done on the sixteenth.
Okay.
The hearing, and then it can get sent.
So it's ten calendar days from the first newspaper publication?
No, it's ten days from receipt of the complete application. We have to set a hearing.
Oh, no, all right, so we're gonna, we are setting the hearing now, but then.
Right.
Isn't it fourteen days from the publication of the doc, of the notification of the public?
Oh, there was ten days, that was right in there, that's in his cover letter also.
Okay, well, if it's ten days, then that would be the twenty-third, right? Because if it was in.
It has to be ten days from, it run, it has to run, be publicized for ten days. So that would be ten days in the paper.
So it'll be two weeks in the paper. And then that would be.
We could have a hearing on the sixteenth.
Okay.
So it'll be in the paper on the sixth, ten days later would be the sixteen.
Right. It'll be on the paper on the sixth and the thirteenth. Right. Do you wanna get a clarification on that? Well, we can ask Tara when she comes in.
She didn't know about the.
Is Tara coming in, Trish?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I would think this would be just standard hearing. For.
And this isn't to say it gets approved.
Right, this is just.
Just so I can send it in.
To allow them to continue with the process.
When Tara comes in, we'll just ask.
Okay.
She didn't know when I asked her before, John, that's why. Because she doesn't do the liquor thing.
Okay.
So when I looked it up, it was ten days, and I was counting the sixteenth.
Well, what's the harm of going the twenty-third?
Just delays it a week for them.
Yeah, it does delay it for them, okay.
But it can't do anything.
True, okay, all right, so why don't we try to get that figured out then?
Okay, if this is okay, can we vote to say yes for the sixteen? Because I can, then, I still have to wait to mail it, I still can't do anything, it's gonna sit in my office.
Okay.
To schedule the hearing for the sixteenth? There's two papers, like, newspaper cycles.
Why don't we, let's decide tonight, but how about if we hold it for a little bit? Maybe I can try to find something off the website, the ABCC website about hearings.
So why don't we approve it tentatively? Provisionally based on the confirmation that it's ten calendar days.
Okay.
From the first publication.
Okay, and then I'll try to verify tonight. All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so that's all of the liquor licenses, animal control?
What are we doing with this, anything?
That is, that we'll need for the hearing.
So you're gonna hold this?
Actually, can I look at that? That might have been saying there, about to require it. Okay, so what do we have on the animal control?
So the animal control officer had some concerns about the animal inspector position. This board was kind enough to offer a little time with Tom Counsel. He wrote, rewrote that section. There may still be a couple of concerns of the animal control officer. I am absolutely content that these documents have been vetted well by Tom Counsel. And as, none of us are animal control officers, nor attorneys. We approved everything other than the two bullet points that I sent out to you. And so I make a motion, we approve these and those, and consider these documents done and in effect.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. And just, the last piece on that, I left a phone message with the animal control officer. Also, you've seen my emails, that just make it explicitly clear that we are using the animal incident report. Expect reports at all the appropriate places within twenty-four hours.
Perfect. Thank you for all your.
Yes.
Hard work on that.
Tom will now survive, now that we have.
Well, now we won't have any bites, now that we've got the form. Yeah, wouldn't that be nice? Okay, Town Administrator Screening Committee meeting update. Oh, step one, oh, thank you. All right, so in step one, when you submit your application to the local licensing authority, the LLA is required by law to note the hour and date your application is filed with it. Then you must publish an advertisement noticing a public hearing on your application. If, so they have to pay for that, huh? Yeah, they would have to pay for that. If their regulations require, within ten days of your application being filed. Okay, so that's what we're doing tonight, is setting the hearing. Then, no sooner than ten days after advertising, it doesn't say business days, the hearing will be held. Perfect, so the thirteenth works.
Sixteenth.
Or sixteenth, yeah, perfect, thanks, Bree, thanks for finding that.
I knew it had somewhere, that's why I said ten.
Perfect. Okay, Town Administrator Screening Committee meeting update, I think we already kind of touched on that?
Did we vote for the hearing?
Yes, provisionally, but now we're, we're good to go. So you said we had thirty-five candidates, and he's, we're gonna try to narrow it down to seven?
Seven, I believe, is where they're.
Okay, perfect.
They'll be interviewing to get us three.
Excellent. Technology, Akers quote.
Just, that was in the Globe, too, once I did.
Oh, was it? Oh, nice.
I missed it.
Yeah, South Shore News.
Wow.
Could you have signed this one? This is, I don't know if I'm allowed to sign before a hearing.
I don't know. All right, so what's Akers Technology?
I kinda lapsed on that. I've sent it off to Steve Pelotus, have a phone conversation. The price difference between the two is not very much, so I'm gonna ask him what he thinks, and go with you. I do have one question, for us short people.
Who's that?
You and I. We're the, the more I thought about it, you know, we should probably have the wallboard above the lip there. Even though it means that we'll only be writing on a third of the board. Just to make the presentation so people can see it when.
Above the molding.
Yeah, and that way we don't interfere with it, and they'll do it as part of the price, so.
And I, I think we actually discussed that it, for people in a distance, the higher up, the more likely sightline would be.
So, that's the way we'll position it.
Great.
The other thing, I was thinking, if we ever had to use it, maybe we could have somebody make some sort of a little stand, we could put it for us.
Like a little, one of those little trampolines, and you can run up and you jump. Do you wanna go get Tara, does she know we're meeting at seven? All right, do you want to correspondence for a wait for Tara?
Okay, so warrants, KMP was sixty-eight hundred. Charles Gross, six thousand two hundred. P three, thirty-eight hundred. Borheck Insurance, one-twenty. Columbia Gas, eighty. Verizon, one-eighty. Pittman Bowes, thirty-eight. I just, I actually wanted to mention on the K and P, four thousand of that is the Zero Winotoxic Road. Zoning bylaws meeting thing, and that doesn't even include the September stuff.
Wow.
So, I mean, we, that, that's a chunk of money when we are trying to deal with enforcement. So that probably is gonna be five thousand dollars altogether.
You said it's a winotoxic, which, what specifically?
The, the firing range.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the, and the contractor's yard issues.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I think that turned out well, but it's just to point out, it's expensive.
It's gonna be a terrible fiscal year for the legal fees.
It is, and, I mean, that's, that's a big chunk right there. We haven't even started in with the assessors, and so, just, just to make you aware, and here's Tara.
Hey, Tara.
Just, I've also asked Rich Bowen to send us a legal, you know, an invoice.
A statement, okay, an invoice, yeah.
Because we don't want this thing piling up at the end. We want it to, sort of, as we go, so we know where we are.
Stay on top of it, perfect, thank you.
Okay, so we'll.
Thank you, Tara.
Suspend correspondence?
Guess what suspend correspondence said? Have our meeting with Tara.
We're not talking about this thing? Oh, we are.
Well, it's part of my three things. So I just wanted to let you know that my assistant, Tricia, and I figured out our schedule for me for the month of October. Because for medical reasons, I'm going to be out for a lot of October. It's a little more extensive than I thought initially. So I am having surgery this coming Wednesday, and I'll be out through the twenty-third of October. So it's really two weeks, and then the following week, when I come back, well, there's only one extra day on the Thursday. So if I don't come that Thursday, then I gain four extra days. And Tricia and I have everything covered. We have Pat Mustakaros is not gonna have to come in every day, but if Tricia feels like she needs to have her come in, she's sort of on call for us.
That's great.
Even if it's just for keeping caught up with filing, or if Tricia's overwhelmed with the phones, or some workload that comes in that's unanticipated. But because we don't have any elections, we're in pretty good shape with all of that. Michael, our IT guy, is coming to help us in the morning just to set up the state computer so that Tricia can check the state computer daily, because we get emails from them daily. And we, we constantly get registry of motor vehicle requests for rotor information. People register to vote online, online and through the registry. So it's something that we always have to check daily, and some of them are, most of them are duplicates, but we have to do it daily. So Michael's gonna help us just setting it up tomorrow. And we've been working on training. I will have access to my emails at all times, but I really will be out of commission for two weeks. And then from there, it'll be sporadic. On the twenty-third, when I returned, or I thought I was going to return, I got another doctor's appointment. And then that's a Monday, and then, so I'll be in after that, and then Tuesday I go work, but then Wednesday I have another appointment. And the month of November, I'll start radiation treatments for possibly six weeks. But I'll be able to do it around the schedule. So we just wanted to let you know, we've talked about it extensively and how we can figure out coverage for everything. So Tricia is my assistant, she's trained to do anything that I can do. So she's been accepted by the state as a notary public as well. She called today because we got the approval, but they didn't tell us the expiration date. So she just needs the expiration date to order the stamp. But that's another service that the town clerk provides that we didn't wanna be without. So that's that about the schedule, did you have any questions about that?
No, just that, you know, whatever help you need, please, don't hesitate to, to reach out and have Pat come in, or if you need us to help in any way, just, yeah, let us know.
Okay. The couple of days that I'll be sort of in and out after the two weeks, I'm gonna be able to work from. able to work from home on our new database for the committees and boards. So, that's another follow-up I wanted to give you. The databases that the money was appropriated for from the town meeting, all except the business certificates have been installed, so committees and boards, we had public records, dog licenses, business certificates, committees and boards, dog licenses, public records. So, we're, we've had, it's had them installed, we've imported the information, but we have to tweak it now because we're seeing, so we're running both systems live on everyone that we have. So, we have one that is functional, so if somebody comes in to do a dog license, we still use the old system, but we're just now reviewing all of our imported information because we're finding that like payment information is listing, if you have two dogs, it's listing one dog twice. So, we're trying to figure out that, and that's just from importing. So, we'll be working on that. On that note, the committees and boards database is pretty close because it was a pretty good Excel spreadsheet that was imported, but they have better and more features than what we had. So, for example, some of the historic records of board members, I left in our database so that they could be imported, and now the new database, we just put active or inactive. So, and they're all parameters that run the reports that have been built into them. So, we captured the historic records, but now I just have to go into the tables and just activate them or inactivate them. So, that's sort of ongoing. Because the state just approved a new open meeting law, it's been revised, and it goes effective October 6th. So, they've been, since the last revision was in 2015, I believe, they've made some revisions. I'm gonna be sending an email to all of the boards and committees, and then like one example of an update, an upgrade, was something that your board wanted to help with our boards and committees getting minutes in by specific time. Well, now it's mandated to be within 30 days. That's just one example of the update. So, I will have an email that will fill out some of the revisions from the last
Is it all tightening, or did they loosen up any of the?
I have some of the information, I don't know if I have it here.
That's alright, when we get the email.
It was kinda tightening, it wasn't loosening.
Yeah. So, we still kinda talk to each other?
No. No, not without being posted, no. So, I will, there's, they listed about four things that were pretty obvious that needed to be worked on. So, because our boards and committees database is now, it's gonna be live soon, the new one, a lot of the people who are elected this year and reappointed have done their updated information, but all the people who were not elected or appointed this year were to that point where just about everybody, it's beyond, or at the two-year mark or beyond. So, on the town clerk's website, on my page, I had it set up so people can, I just have to provide the link for, and send everything by email. So, in addition to updating our boards and committees, I'll be also sending an email to everybody, to our distribution list. On our website, I'm gonna have it go sequentially, so the first one will be conflict of interest summary. They'll sign it electronically, and it automatically goes to Tricia's email with the subject line in it. It's a web form on our website. Then it says thank you, there's a receipt that says thank you, and then it'll have the link for the next one. So, our board and committee members and department members will just have to click the link sequentially, and you'll get all three of them. And then the last one will be the quiz again, which is the conflict of interest quiz that has to be done every year. So, that's all part of the boards and committees database. The business certificates database was supposed to be installed tonight, actually, but she canceled. So, we're, we have our historic records back to 2008. We're gonna be able to track renewal notices instead of a manual process. Tricia and I will monthly make that part of our process for renewal notices to go out, and it'll be an easy report to print. We're gonna be trying to collect emails from everybody so we can do as much as we can electronically for every database that we have. And we're also merging records from the assessor's office. They got a list of, from the Department of Revenue, personal property information that has business listings, if they're, if they say that they're a home business. We're gonna be putting it into our system to see if they should have a business certificate. So, we're sort of cross pollinating information that's being gathered from other departments. The last thing, do you have any questions about the database? Okay, so it's all a work in progress. And then the last piece is the approvals from the attorney general's office. So, the municipal or general bylaws were all approved. They did give comments to have our town council review, you know, their answers and if they approved them or not. So, the revolving funds account, I gave it to Barbara and Colleen, and they reviewed what the attorney general said, and they agree, and so did Greg Corbrow, our town council. So, that, those are good to go. I have forwarded the information on Article 25, which was two separate sections of the dog, dog bylaw. So, one was the complaint of nuisance and dangerous dogs and procedure, and the other was Section 14, killing of a dog known to have done damage or bonds. So, they gave some recommendations. They think that at next town meeting, more specific information should be honed in on to make sure that it's compatible with the state law. So, I forwarded all of that information to the bylaw review committee. I forwarded the answers from the attorney general and how it was revised last year. So, that's sort of been delegated out to them, so I'm hoping that they'll work on that for next year's town meeting. So, 9, 25, and 26 were the general ones, so I can make those revisions now in our bylaws. The zoning Article 29 was put on Chapter 299, hold, which means that there were procedural defects in the hearing process, and the notification is going in the newspaper this coming Friday. It has to be only published once. This is my certification to fix the procedural defects. So, it goes in the paper Friday, just one publication. I have to post it for 14 days here in a conspicuous place in the town hall, and there's a 21-day expiration date for residents to file a claim stating that the hearing was misleading or was prejudicial as of October 27th.
What article was that?
It's the, it's the Medical Marijuana Moratorium.
No, that's the recreational marijuana moratorium.
I have it right here. It's Temporary Moratorium on Recreational Marijuana Establishment.
So, we had procedural flaws with that, so it was not accepted?
It's on hold. They will accept it after 21 days of the publication this Friday.
Okay.
So, they don't give any feedback, then?
So, there's 21 days for residents to file a claim that says what I just said.
Okay.
Misleading or was prejudicial. So, what the procedural defects were, were that it wasn't, the hearing was not given to the Department of Housing and Community and the Abutting Planning Boards and Regional Planning. They have a list of any hearings. Deb Anderson is the new chairperson on the board, so we've reviewed what this entails, what the procedural defects are. The first hearing, it happened to be a continuation because she couldn't get a quorum of her board. So, she did publish, it was published in the newspaper in time, but the hearing wasn't posted in time, the notice of hearing. So, it was published in the paper, but the notice of hearing wasn't posted in time. We had enough time to post it for the continued hearing, which happened a week later, but I had to do a revised Form 7 for the attorney general because they said it wasn't sufficient.
Okay.
So, so Deb is aware of the procedures for passing any kind of zoning bylaw
Okay.
Now.
So, Tricia will let us know when, after the 14 days is up, if there's any?
Yeah, I have it all, I have a draft already, so they have 21 days, actually.
21 days, okay.
So, I have, this is my certification that I send to the attorney general when all the dates are finished. So, it's getting posted tomorrow here, which is October 3rd. The publication is going in the 6th of October, and the 27th is the date. I'll be, I'll be in and out and back by then. So, she has paperwork ready to go in case anybody comes to the office to file a claim.
Okay.
So, you're gonna be a little overwhelmed?
No, I'm not.
No?
No, and we're very set up.
Great.
Very organized.
That's super.
I'm not overwhelmed. I, I think we're in good shape.
And I'm not that far.
I will be for two weeks. I'm gonna be pretty far away. Everything that's going on presently, presently, I think it's good.
Great, that's good to hear.
Great to hear, Tricia.
I don't know if we're gonna, you know, have heart pain or something.
Right, right. But at this day and time, good to tell, yeah.
Everything is really smooth.
That's great.
Great, good. Good, good.
Use us when you can.
Well, we
When you need us.
Well, you're supposed to use me when you can. So, and if there's any, she can get in touch with me at any time.
Okay.
And if anybody wants to reach me, I have access to email too at any time, so I'm pretty sure I'm gonna be working because I don't idle well, so.
You need to learn how to idle.
No, my mother is 71
So, don't call us and ask us.
Worse than me, so.
Tell her, please.
So, I know two weeks because that's under doctor's orders. The rest of it, though, I have to play it by ear because we don't know what the results are gonna be, and I do have to figure out the maintenance.
We're not gonna call you.
That's okay. Okay, that was last.
Thank you, Tara, very much.
Thank you.
Quick healing and much comfort.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tricia.
Alright.
Alright, so you wanna move back to correspondence?
Back to correspondence. This is from an email Habitat, Habitat for Humanity, noting that most of the land they use for the habitat houses is donated, much of the land is, has been taken by towns for taxes, and they're wondering if they could come in sometime to discuss the options of town in Plumpton and learn more about it. I'm wondering a little, though, admire what they're doing. I think we have some tax title issues that haven't been resolved yet, we haven't explored, and maybe if we shouldn't hold off a little while on this, you know, until we know a little more.
Can I get a copy of that, Bree? Because we may want to bring them in with the housing production plan?
Yeah.
Just to talk about it?
I guess we're one of the only towns that hasn't done anything.
Okay. Well, we're working on it.
So, I said to forward the email.
Perfect.
And
Yeah, because the properties are all in kind of flux right now.
Right, and I think once we get that resolved, yeah.
And we'll have some options.
I'll forward that to you.
Perfect.
So, that will fall behind.
Thank you.
So, this is from Plymouth County Development Council, they're having their 45th animal meeting Friday, October 20th. Looks like it's a luncheon. I am not available that day.
I can't go.
What is it?
It's Plymouth County Development Council, their annual meeting at the Hotel 1620, down on the waterfront.
Thirty dollars per person. Hold it. Okay, we'll leave that.
Okay.
See how that goes.
Thanks for the invite.
Comcast is letting us know that on November 7th, ESPN Classic will no longer be available. Please make note. And then effective November 20th, XF Triple Play Rewards Sports Entertainment Service is probably, apparently, maybe there's a little price change. Old Colony Joint Transportation Committee, this is their agenda for their October 5th meeting coming up. This is a request for legal services from Bob Carling concerning a ZOMAN determination on property located at 280 Main Street. Do any of us know anything about this?
Yes.
The gas station.
It's the gas station. They wanna do condominium, is that the right word, condominiums?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Was it condominiums?
Condominiamize.
Yeah, condominiumize the upstairs, and he's already contacted council.
Not upstairs. What do you mean?
What are they gonna condominiumize?
We haven't heard anything about this. What's
The Plumpton service
Yeah.
The plans are attached to it. It's Plumpton service, the gas station, and then there's the service station
Yeah.
That's behind it. They share the same septic and the same well.
Okay.
So, they condominiumize, I'm saying that right, the properties.
Okay, so they're not changing the properties to condos?
No.
Okay.
But that's what they call it.
Okay.
So, he went to the registry of D, which registry of D provided the assessors of this change.
Okay.
So, now it's Unit A is the service station mechanic shop, and Unit B, I believe, I might have it in the reverse, I could be, I don't remember whose unit A and whose unit B.
Unit B is the existing service garage.
Okay.
Unit A is the existing convenience store.
Okay, I had that in my head, sorry about that.
What's the reason?
The new people bought it.
So, there's
So, new people bought the gas, they bought A, and he still owns B. Okay.
They share septic
And well.
Okay.
And one of the questions that came in today was, well, who's gonna pay the taxes? So, then I was like, well, it didn't affect us license-wise for liquor license.
Right.
But that's, this is one of the things, so
Interesting.
They would, there's nothing in the bylaws from what I understand. Bob was a little on the, so he wants to talk to legal first.
Okay.
Because one of the things was, it's not changing use. It's a change of ownership, but the usage is still the same of what they're doing.
Okay.
It's not like they're putting an apartment, condos and bathrooms.
I think he should talk to legal just to make sure that this
Yeah, okay.
They were talking about something in bylaws, like, you know, is there anything in place for that, because there is some.
Okay.
So, let's pray it doesn't get messy, because I can imagine it could, but I make a motion, we grant Bob Carling time at town council.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So, these are a couple emails that I thought probably should be written correspondence. This one in particular is from the police chief. It's an email to us, the board of selectmen. He noted that he, this relates to the conversation last week about the potential project on Main Street and Ring Road. He notes that that is the worst intersection in town, in his opinion, that there have been several close calls, the new design would create better sightlines in the long term. The main reason to read this is that he notes in the short term, a couple of solutions to calm traffic that he's putting in effect are, one, having officers can conduct stepped up traffic enforcement, particularly at the times of drop-off and pickup at the Denit, and he's also been in touch with the school, Denit school principal, and they're gonna communicate by email with all parents concerning traffic safety. So, some short-term things that might be a little bit helpful and some action, and I appreciate that he's doing that.
Absolutely.
And he was out there.
Yeah.
Good.
Good.
They have the radar.
Terrific.
And it really catches you.
Notice we've posted some signs now that say 25 miles per hour around the curve.
Good. Excellent. I'm so glad to hear it.
It does catch you, you don't realize it catches you.
Yeah, we're moving along.
So this is an email from Old Colony NPO, which is Metropolitan Planning Organization. Save the date, October 17th at 10:00 AM for Old Colony Metropolitan Planning Organization. An agenda will come along in the future, so just making you all aware, I know that I'm not available that day, though actually sounds a little interesting. I think that doesn't need any attention. Just an email from Bree about the flag being at half mast because of some horrors today. The Plumpton Halifax Express, it reports that the Board of Selectmen met last week. We probably know about that. There's a nice article about service dog Lily, a big fluffy dog. Sunrise tomorrow at 6:43. South Shore Equine Center is doing collection on stuff for horses in trouble and all the troubleers around the country, and there's information there about donations that can be made to them. They're doing a nice job. And in a really nice article on Plumpton resident Laurel Phailis singing the National Anthem at the Bruins hockey game.
Very neat.
And sounded like she did a great job, and boy, does she have a head of hair on her.
Beautiful hair.
It's on Plumpton Helping Plumpton, so you can go in and actually, they got the video?
Oh, neat.
She's got a fantastic voice.
She sang it for Memorial Day.
Oh, that was her? Oh, she does have a beautiful voice.
Yay for Laurel. And I'm glad that that completes the correspondence.
Okay. All right, so dates to remember, we won't be meeting until, well, actually, it's not gonna be the 16th because we're meeting with Bernie, isn't it, on the 11th?
Wednesday, the 11th.
Okay, so we'll be meeting on the 11th, and then our next Monday night meeting will be the 16th, so we'll be meeting every Monday the remainder of the month.
Yeah.
All right, board's goals for coming year, financial management.
Okay.
We've got to get the IT plan and I think we got both fire, we got the fire vehicles. We're just waiting for the IT plan. Okay.
Well, pass them down.
Yeah, absolutely. Great, thank you.
So the pieces that were missing, there were some minor tweaks.
Mm-hmm.
Page three, they asked, Monica asked us to put in something about infrastructure technology, and I had Michael Rodriguez put that together. It's very brief, but I think what we'll do is we'll elaborate on it and as we go forward when the town administrator comes on.
That's perfect.
Okay. School facilities. I've sent what you see written here, this was written by Monica to ask John Wilhelmson just to verify. You can see in the end of the first paragraph where it says, please verify. So I just did that, so I expect he'll come back within a day or two.
Okay.
Page six was Monica wanted the inventory. So the first part is the fire vehicle inventory. Second page is the highway vehicle inventory, and then the police vehicle inventory.
Perfect.
So we'll just, I may clean up these a little bit, but we'll just.
Okay, so after you verify this with John, you'll email it to Monica? Or Bree can email it to Monica?
Yeah, so one of the problems we have is that we don't have the ability to, to make corrections to PDFs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now Michael Rodriguez is coming in tomorrow, and my recommendation is that we, Tara thinks there may be a two license permit that Dale originally got that was on the laptop.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll verify that. If that's still valid, then I think Bree and Tara should be okay so that we can go in and just put this in. So when we send it to Monica, we're not sending her this, we're sending her the package.
Okay.
So that she can see that it's done the right way.
Okay.
If, if in fact we don't have the licenses, then I recommend that we get them. I mean, it's, a business has gotta have the ability to be able to correct.
Well, at this point, I think she just wants the text.
Yeah. Well, we can send her that.
Yeah, I would just send her, yeah, what you've got, and then, I mean, she wants final, so I would wait till you.
Yeah, wait for John.
Have this confirmed by John, but we need to get this to her. Okay, so hopefully we can have this squared away within a day or two?
Tweaks, I would think so, yeah.
Okay.
We gotta get the right name for the swimming hole. We gotta get out.
It, I did. I did all that. Yeah, all we needed was the IT and the vehicles.
I didn't see your corrections then, I guess.
No, oh, no, I didn't. I just emailed it to, to Monica. It is still called the Winnetox Swim Hall. I went down, took a picture of the sign, but there's no swimming allowed. I may even have the sign because I took a picture of it.
I think we should make a motion to rename the, you know.
But there's another sign on there that says the old something mill.
Yes, yes, there is, but it still says Winnetox, or no, it might say, actually, let me find the picture.
Because when we did the CPC project, we, we used the new name, the Boo Boo D Mill.
All right, let's see. Gallery.
And why isn't there swimming in there anymore?
I wouldn't want to swim in there. It doesn't, it doesn't look very nice.
Yeah, there's all kinds of legal issues and other issues.
Okay, old Plumpton Cotton Factory. Okay.
You know, the former, it can always be the former.
Yeah, well, it says that. It says.
The former Winnetox Swim Hall.
Along with citizens created the Winnetox Swim Hall, no longer used as a swimming area, this site offers kayak, fishing kayak and picnic opportunities.
So.
Otherwise, it would be what, the mill?
You put in cotton factory.
The cotton mill. I know, I saw a different name for it and.
We should fundraise for naming opportunity here.
Sure.
Anyone.
Yeah, because it really shouldn't be.
Cisco.
Yeah, should not be. Yeah, and then the sign, no swimming.
We gotta rename it at some point.
Maybe it's called, yeah, the No Swimming Hole. It's already got a sign. Okay, so perfect. So, yeah, so as soon as we can get this to her, we'll get her squared away. Perfect. All right, public safety.
So they met last week. Thank goodness the Board of Health was able to determine that the present septic system was adequate. There's a little bit of concern, but that's been straightened out. They did the soil borings and that came back okay. Most importantly, the expectation is there'll be an estimate of the total cost for the 10-11 meeting. That becomes really important. That becomes an important meeting because if by chance the estimate's high, then they're gonna have to start shaving something off to get under budget. Yeah, more importantly, if by chance the estimate's low, then they can go ahead and plan for the additional entrance at Route 58. That would really, really be helpful. So hopefully that's gonna happen in two weeks. The expectation is that the whole project can go out to bid within two months, and the groundbreaking still has the chance to be in March.
Terrific. Okay, grants. We're, the Housing Production Plan, we need to have that done by 12:31. That's when the grant runs out. We were without a planner for most of the summer because Eric left his position, and we now have a new planner, so we will do everything we possibly can to get that Housing Production Plan completed by 12:31. And we can't apply for any more of the Community Compact Grants until we finish this one that we're currently working on, so we'll get this wrapped up. Volunteerism? Anything?
Uh, no.
Okay, no, okay. All right, technology.
I think we.
Already covered it with doctors?
Yeah, I've got a couple other things, though, I don't know where they fit, but.
Well, you know, it would be nice to get that second license if we don't have it because even this document, we can go in and modify it after the fact.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we should do that.
Mm-hmm. All right, minutes, 9:18. We had open session from Bree.
My phone has a 9:25. I will get them.
Okay, all right. Did everybody get a chance to read them?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, I thought it looked good, too.
Okay, make a motion, they be approved.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then we had 9:25 executive session from Mark. I thought those looked great. Anything on those, John?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the 9:25 executive session minutes as written.
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, in 9:25 you're gonna get for us. Okay, so we'll probably do those then, 10-11.
I'll make a license as kind of.
And then we'll get, we'll be current. Okay.
Yeah.
We'll meet on the 18th. Okay. Did you have some things you wanted to?
Just a quick thing. We need to, the fire clerk is still up, the posting is still up on the website.
Okay.
So we need to get that off, but I guess that raises the question of, you know, who's gonna monitor those things? I, I think all the departments that come under us or the administrator-to-be should be, you know, we should make sure that those things get pulled, because I had a couple of people ask, you know, and you have to tell them whether it's been already hired for a couple of weeks. So that's just a myth. The other thing I was thinking of, why don't we post agendas on Facebook on Plumpton Helping Plumpton?
I don't know, it's, it's not a town social media site and.
But I noticed Halifax does it. Charlie Seber, Se.
Yeah.
He goes in and posts things.
Is his town though?
Yeah, it's Halifax local, they call it.
We, ours is run by someone else, it's not a.
No, no, it's, it's not run by the town of Halifax. It's the same as Plumpton Helping Plumpton, but it's something to think about because I think we're making, we're missing an opportunity.
Well, I think we need our own site.
I mean, Tara's posting on there now.
I think we need our own social media site where we can give people the news and accurate information.
We're not set up for that yet.
Nope, not yet, but I don't know how big of a deal it actually is, and maybe once we get the town administrator on board, that's something we can talk about.
The insurance company Maya sent me a whole social media, it's like section of our insurance.
How many people are looking at the cable, would you guess, are?
And the last time I looked, I'd ten, fifteen.
I looked at YouTube today, there were fourteen.
Yeah.
There's 2,000, over 2,000 people on Plumpton Helping Plumpton.
Here's the thing, I, I'd be a little concerned that putting it on there encourages a conversation that we can't be part of, and I think one of the problems with, sometimes with Plumpton Helping Plumpton is they get off on a pretty long harangue of replies on something that a simple fact, had any of us been able to put forth a factual piece, they wouldn't have gotten off, and I, I just, I, I would be pretty uncomfortable at this point. I mean, there's a very clear way to find out what the agenda is. Anyone that's interested in the agenda from week to week can have it shipped to their email.
I think we're being too defensive. I think we should be out there reaching out to the people rather than expecting them to reach out to us.
Oh, I completely agree with you, John. I just think we need to do it through our own site. I really.
But that probably won't happen for you.
No, I think, I think it will. I think it will. I just don't think it's gonna be as difficult as we think it is, and I went to a great presentation at the, that MMA meeting that you and I went to, and the woman that talked about social media was unbelievable, and how every day they're putting things out, and, you know, the, the chief is looking at traffic at Main Street and Ring Road, you know, everything that's happening in town, lost dog, whatever, but it's in the official site where it is accurate information that is being out, you know, goes out to everybody that it friends you or whatever. I don't even know how social media works because I'm not part of it, but I just think that, I don't, I don't really want to have it on Plumpton Helping Plumpton.
Well, we have a fire one now, we have a police one that are.
They have social media?
Sure.
They do have sites?
Sure.
Okay.
If you go onto Facebook and put in Plumpton Police, it'll take you right to their, to their site, same with the fire department.
You'd have an administrator up the page.
Tara's posting on Plumpton Helping Plumpton. Not often, but when she thinks that, you know, if there's something like the dog licenses, then she'll post it, you know, hey, this is happening.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty that could be posted. I just think a more appropriate format would be something that is the official town site.
I'm, I'm suggesting we only post something like the agendas to let people know if they have an interest. Hey, we're here. There's vehicles. One of the things we gotta do, and I wrote a letter to Area 58, is the last meeting that we had was posted on YouTube the next day. It still hasn't been posted on Area 58.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, and now we've got a link on our website to Area 58, but when it takes you there, there's not the meeting.
Do we have a link to YouTube?
No. No, and I, I don't think we should be encouraging YouTube when we have Area 58.
Well, then that's a conversation with Area 58 that they need to get our meetings up there faster.
I sent Rich off a note saying, hey.
Does she want me to follow up?
I, I hear you on the agenda. I especially hear you on having our own website, and I, I think, you know, I, getting out accurate information so there's not endless chatter based on inaccurate information is very appealing.
But chatter takes place anyways.
And, and if so, fine. On the other hand, you know, if there's something out there, I mean, it, I find it really frustrating sometimes, you know, when they're arguing about something that we know the answer to and we really can't do much with it.
Why? That's what I'm saying. Why can't we answer if we know it's factual, just say, hey, this is what's going on?
I think there's open, huge open meeting law problems there.
Why don't we put this on the agenda for our next Monday night meeting, and I can get something from council, I can get you the social media policies?
Wonder that lady you mentioned?
You know, I tried to get her, I think her name's Julie Bowen, or, she's a town administrator for some town, and she does an amazing job, and she does the page, and people feed her stuff all day long, and she's just punching it in, and she said, you know, the stuff that gets the biggest hits are animal stories.
Of course.
Dog pictures, send dog pictures, and, you know, people love that, and they'll get a little news along the way, but, yeah, I just think it's something that we need to look at, and it could be that, you know, the new town administrator is gonna be super savvy, hopefully, with electronics and technology, and they'll have some ideas on, on how to get moving with it. Because I agree with you, we need to get the information out.
Do you want it to be social media as the topic?
Yeah, social media.
John, do you want me to send you what, it's a woman from Maya, when I, you know how they come in every year and we review all the stuff that's in there?
I might even have one with me, too, a social media policy. If I don't have it electronically, I'll.
Social media policy.
Okay, so on to rants and raves. You wanna go first, John?
You know, I really, after today's things that went on, I, I just don't feel comfortable. You know, I really, after today's things that went on, I just don't feel comfortable. I mean, I guess I have a rave at the library, if you saw the Boy Scouts, the Eagle Scout, put a bike stand up if you...
Oh, did they? Oh, terrific.
Very well done. You have to go over and see it, and it's been on Plimpton Helping Plimpton, the photographs.
It was really neat.
I don't really either, just to say, it's just tragic, and it's so sad, and I just wonder when it's going to end. It just, I don't know, my heart's go out to the people, their families, and I just can't imagine the horror and what they're going through.
All right, so mine is, I happened by a TV program once recently where there was some discussion or training of a younger person by an older leader and about priorities, and the fellow said, so it's family, and then crown, and then honor, in that order. And I, what intrigued me about it was, oh, in that order, and I think you could argue with that order, but in terms of making decisions, particularly in a leadership role, having that sort of prioritized of what one's values are. So in particular, with the recent events and the events today, it reminded me about thinking about what the values are of a town, a state, a nation, and in what order those values might be. A picture that has sort of haunted me for months, really since the last election, was a little kid holding up a sign, "Make America Kind Again," and I'm not sure that's the only value or the first value, but that feels like a real high value that maybe needs to get reinvigorated in this country now, and maybe is some kind of minimal antidote to what's going on. So aside from that, just a rave, actually, for our town clerk and our assistant town clerk, Tara and Tricia, who are two amazing, strong women who do great things for the town and have weathered some of their own adversity with beautiful equanimity, and they're really models. So thank you, Tara and Tricia.
Very well said. All right, anything else?
Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. See you next week.
Good night, David.
Actually, we'll see you on the eighteenth, because the eleventh won't be filmed.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
See you on the eighteenth.